Following the CDC guidelines.
Three, four. We need one more for Quorum. I'm sure Vera will be coming tonight. Oh, we got all kinds of people. All right. Hi, Luanne. Hi, Vera. Vera, as soon as we can see you, we can start.
This conference will now be recorded.
I scared her away.
I'm recording it just so we don't forget.
Okay, all right. Hi, Carlita.
I'm gonna have to go. I'm gonna have to go out and come back in.
Okay. Hi, Sarah.
Hi, Bear.
As soon as we see Vera, we'll get started. She's first on the agenda, so we need her here. Well, why don't we get started? I'm sure Vera will catch up. And when we get to her on the agenda, she'll probably be here. So I called to order the June 21st, 2021 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order at 6:33 PM. Ms. Painter, will you call the roll, please?
A Corsey.
Here.
Aho.
Here.
Chandy.
Chandy, yes.
Cooley.
Cooley is here.
Cotton.
Here.
For Tony.
Here.
Plant.
Plant is here.
Ron. DeVivo. Ward.
Okay, we have, uh, first order of business is, um, to take note of the fact that Roz Hall has resigned after 24 years. And I have a proclamation that I'll read and, uh, I hope we can, uh, someone will move to approve the proclamation. So this is a proclamation in honor of Roswell Hall. Whereas Roz Hall began his service as an alternate to the commission on November 17th, 1997, through August 2nd, 1999, at which time he was appointed as a full member of the commission, a position to which he subsequently, he was subsequently elected to in 1999 and served for 22 years. Whereas Mr. Hall has been instrumental in numerous updates to the zoning and subdivision regulations through his role on the Regulatory Review Committee and has provided innumerable insights as changes to regulations were discussed and debated by the committee. And whereas Mr. Hall has provided thoughtful and constructive feedback in his review of applications for the Planning and Zoning Commission and Inland Wetlands Agency, from his questions of applicants to his active participation in commission discussions on the merits of application and whereas Mr. Hall has served as a model of the collegiality that is a hallmark of the commission. And whereas through a lifetime of commitment to both his country and his community, serving as a veteran, volunteer, and commission member, Mr. Hall has contributed greatly to what makes Mansfield a wonderful place to live and raise a family. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Mansfield Planning and Zoning Commission, on behalf of the citizens of Mansfield, do hereby commend and thank Roz Hall for his long and distinguished service to the commission and the town of Mansfield. We expect that you will be able to easily transition into a life of relaxation and tranquility on Monday evenings, affirmed on this 21st day of June in the year 2021. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll move.
Tony says yes.
Okay, moved by, by for Tony, second by Ron. All in favor? Uh, unanimous. Okay. And, um.
I did invite Roz to attend, um, this evening and, um, he must not have been. I said. So, and we took a break. Proclamation that, um, dropped by.
Okay, good. I'm glad to see Vera's here now. Um, we need a motion to appoint Vera as a full member. Finally, back to being a full member. All right. So, uh, a motion to appoint Vera as a full member.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint her full-time.
Okay.
Move to appoint Vera Sterns Ward as a full member of the Planning and Zoning Commission as a replacement for Roswell Hall effective immediately.
Moved by Plant. Second by Cooley. All in favor? Raise your hand. Okay, unanimous. You're back in Vera, a full member. All right. Okay. Now we have minutes from. What date was that?
June. May I make, may I make a comment on the minutes?
Yes.
Uh, the date is missing on the minutes. It should be June, um. What is it? June 17th?
Should be June 7th, yeah.
7th, 7th, right.
Okay, with that correction. And that's what Vera is good at, catching those errors. We missed you. All right.
Paul, can I, Paul?
Yes.
Can I make a motion that we, um, propose that Vera becomes the secretary?
Oh, yes, that's important.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You have a, you have a secretary.
Oh.
The new.
You want to do it temporarily.
If you would like, if, 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 this is Linda, if you'd like to consider a change to that position, you would need to first make a motion to add it to the agenda.
Okay. Um, okay.
First of all, I, I just, Benoule is your secretary, so.
Would you be offended if we took the secretary job away from you?
No, I would be, I would be very glad if Vera, Vera is the best secretary.
Okay, good. Okay. With that out of the way, uh, would someone like to add it to the agenda? Ken?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we, uh, uh, make the appointment, excuse me, add to the agenda the appointment as permanent secretary, uh, of Vera Ward.
Okay, moved by Ron.
Second by Chandy.
Second by Chandy. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. So that's on the agenda. Uh, so Linda, do we take it up now or do we take it up later?
Um, I would just, for clarification, it sounds like you were trying to add that, um, kind of under number two, member resignation, appointment of new full member to kind of add a second, third item under item two.
Okay, so we can take that up right now.
Thank you.
Okay. So now I would entertain a motion to make Vera Ward our permanent secretary. Ken?
Yeah, I'll move we, uh, now that we've added to the agenda, I'll move we, uh, designate Vera Ward as our permanent secretary.
Okay, moved by Ron.
Nice, second.
Second by Chandy. All in favor? Raise your hand. Unanimous. All right, we're back to normal.
Thank you, I think.
You say, I think. All right. Now we can get to the minutes. We didn't do the minutes yet, did we? Uh, oh, yes, we're, um, with the correction of putting the correct date on the minutes. Did someone move already or do we need a motion for the minutes? Oh, no, we need a motion. Someone like to move to approve the minutes with the correction of putting the correct date on it?
I still move that we accept the minutes of June 7th, uh, with the correction of the date.
Moved by Ward.
Plant second.
Plant second. All in favor?
I'd like to note that I was. Watching. Chandy.
You watched, okay. You watched the whole thing?
And thank you.
That was one of the long ones, yeah.
And thanks to Vera for subbing a secretary.
Okay. Uh, there is a zoning agent report in your, um.
Paul, just to clarify, was that a unanimous vote?
Yes, unanimous, yes. Okay, and we've got some public hearings tonight. And, uh, Linda, would you like to provide an overview? You do so well on that and I hate doing that so badly.
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
As a reminder to all participants, including members and staff, please state your name before speaking, which I just failed to do. My name is Linda Painter. I'm the Director of Planning and Development. For those who are viewing at home on live stream or Channel 191, please understand that there is a one to two-minute time lag due to transmission delays. If you'll be providing verbal testimony during the public hearings, you can call into the meeting at any time. We will take a few minutes after the applicant's presentation to give people time to call in. The guidelines for the public hearings this evening are as follows. The purpose of tonight's hearings is to receive relevant information about the proposed applications from the public. Order and decorum shall be maintained at all times during the hearings. The commission reserves the right to adjourn the hearings to another date and time if the discussion becomes unruly and unmanageable. Given the virtual format, we ask that everyone bear with us if we encounter any glitches. If we are unable to overcome technical issues and/or the commission is having difficulty understanding information presented in this format, the hearing will be continued, hearings will be continued to another meeting. The order of presentations this evening for each hearing will be first the applicant, uh, and then public comment. We will hear first from supporters, then from those in opposition. And lastly, those who do not, have not taken a position or are requesting additional information. When addressing the commission, please state your name and address and any party, group, or organization you represent, if any, for the record, before beginning your comments. Limit your comments to the subject of the public hearing. Avoid repetition where possible. Summarize reports and letters that are submitted to the commission rather than reading them aloud, as all written information is copied and distributed to members. Direct all questions and comments to the chair. Do not attempt to engage in dialogue with members of the commission, staff, or any other parties to the hearing. Speak clearly to ensure your comments are audible to members of the public watching from home and are recorded. Commission members may ask questions of anyone providing testimony, but will not discuss the relative merits of the application until the hearing is closed. Failure to abide by these policies and procedures may result in a muting of your microphone or dismissal from the hearing. Instructions on how to participate in the public hearing are listed on the agenda. For those who would like to call in, please call 1-408-650-3123 and use the following access code, 854-960-309. Again, that's phone number 1-408-650-3123 and access code 854-960-309. If you encounter any problems calling into the hearing, please call 860-429-3341 and a staff member will assist you. And with that, Mr. Chair, uh, the first hearing you have this evening, which was scheduled for 6:30 PM, is a zoning map amendment application of KRCL LLC and E&amp;I Associates LLC, applicants and owners, and Haven Communities applicant to revise the boundary between the flood hazard zone and plan business three PB3 zone on three parcels located at 1717, 1733 and 1753 Stores Road. Assessors parcel IDs 8.15.10, 8.15.9, and 8.15.8 respectively. PCC file 1371.
Okay, the hearing is opened at 6:46 PM, uh, and a roll call?
Hazard zone and plan business three PB3 zone on three parcels located at 1717.
Thank you, whoever just, uh, turned that off. So for this evening's hearing, A Corsey.
Here.
Aho.
Here.
Chandy. Cooley. Cotton.
Here.
For Tony.
Here.
Plant.
There.
Ron.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
And all of your members and alternate DeVivo is not present this evening, so you have your full complement of regular members, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, is there a legal notice to read?
There is. You'll bear with me while I bring that up.
The following legal notice was published on June 8th, 2021 on the town's website on the legal notices webpage. Public hearing notice. The Mansfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearings on June 21st, 2021 via web-based virtual meeting to hear comments regarding the following applications. At 6:30 PM, zoning map amendment application of KRCL LLC and E&amp;I Associates LLC applicant slash owners and Haven Communities applicant to change the zoning district of portions of the properties located at 1717, 1753, and 1733 Stores Road. Assessors parcel IDs 8.15.10, 8.15.9, and 8.15.8 respectively, from flood hazard FH to plan business three PB-3. PCC file number 1371. Additional information regarding this application is available at HTTPS colon backslash backslash www.mansfieldct.gov backslash document center backslash index backslash 638 or by emailing planzonedept@mansfieldct.org. Information on how to participate in the public hearing will be on the meeting agenda, which will be posted at HTTP colon backslash backslash www.mansfieldct.gov backslash agenda center no less than 24 hours before the meeting. No information from the public shall be received after the close of the public hearings. Paul Aho, Chair, the new Chandy Secretary.
Okay, the floor is open to, for the applicants to make their. Yes.
Mr. Chair, just be, just before that, there are a couple of other items that I do need to.
All right.
Um, one is, uh, my agenda item, my report of June 15th, 2021, which is noted on the agenda. The agenda also contains the application submissions, the applicant's presentation this evening, uh, as well as, uh, courtesy referrals that were sent to adjoining communities and the required town clerk referral, um, per statutes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now the applicant can speak.
Have you saved the time for the starting of the meeting of the public hearing?
Yes, uh, time is, uh, 6:50 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Nuff. I'm an attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street in Milford, Connecticut, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the two property owners and three applicants. It's nice to see all of you again. This is an application, as Linda had indicated, to change the zone of, uh, certain portions of our properties from flood hazard to plan business three. If you all know, in your, sitting as your role as inland wetland. Uh, this can approve, uh, our application for our inland wetland license, uh, I think back in February. Um, you currently have pending a special permit application that is scheduled to open on July 6th. And so this is sort of the intermediary application of this, uh, zone map amendment application. Um, this application is a little bit unusual in the context of zone map amendments because frankly, um, it's an incredibly simple request. Um, I noted on your agenda that you had allotted 15 minutes for our hearing. I think we could probably do it considerably less because it is so straightforward. As Linda had, uh, helpfully indicated in her memo, um, and as Jeff Ford, our professional engineer, will explain, uh, in a minute. You know, FEMA occasionally has to paint with a broad brush when it creates FEMA maps. And certainly that is the case here. Um, and your regulations and your POCD in fact recognize, you know, that possibility and in some cases that likelihood. So Sarah, if you can switch to the next slide. No, if you know the, the break, the break change, sorry. Or the regulation.
Sorry, John, it looks like I don't have the right thing here. I'm sorry.
I could share mine if you need me to, guys.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you, Jeff.
Not a problem at all.
All right, so, so while Jeff is pulling up his screen, and I, uh, this is actually quoted in Linda's memo as well, is your regulations, uh, Article 2, Section C.1. G specifically says, "In cases of uncertainty in the definition of flood hazard areas, the flood insurance rate maps, floodway maps, and flood insurance studies shall take precedence over the zoning map." And your regulations define what the flood hazard area is as the land within the community is subject to 1% or greater chance of flooding in a given year. And as stated in our Loma determination, FEMA has in fact determined that the area that we propose to rezone is not located in an area that has a 1% chance or greater of flooding in a given year. And then also your POCD also recognizes this, and I think the relevant language is, uh, in the, um, uh, quoted section there, the last sentence, it says, "The flood zones depicted on map 2.5 flood zone, flood risk zones are based on the Talon County floodplain maps last updated by FEMA in 1980. As such, some flood areas may be different than shown based on subsequent development." And that is in fact what happened here. While, you know, some of us, uh, on this call are of the age that 1980 doesn't seem that long ago. In fact, it was, you know, more than a few years ago and I see, you know, we've had an opportunity to update those, update the maps. And, uh, Jeff can take you through, um, how, you know, you know, FEMA had to sort of, as I said, you know, painted with a broad brush picking one elevation line without, without, uh, taking into account intervening, um, topography. So, uh, that, that is what has led to FEMA making a determination that a good portion of our site is not in the flood hazard zone. Uh, and that is, uh, uh, in accordance with your town engineer's determination as well. So just wanted to give you to Jeff Ford, he can take you through the details of that Loma determination.
Good evening and hello again. Jeff Ford, uh, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Bowler Engineering located at 65 West South Road in West Hartford, Connecticut. John had touched on a lot of this, uh, and I'll go through it in a bit more detail here, but what FEMA calls this old mapping and sometimes these, they call them inadvertent, uh, inclusions. Um, and it's something that, based on that old mapping from 1980, it's the best data that was available at that time. Um, and that's what's shown here on this, in this red line here, and I'll zoom in just so you guys can get a sense for where the current flood hazard zone is. Um, and, and as you can see, what's also shown on this exhibit is the topography. So a lot of times when the base flood elevation, and in this particular part of town, it's not established. Uh, it's on the applicant to use this method, um, through the FEMA guidelines and in concert with, uh, town engineering, um, input. Uh, and you go through and you establish what that elevation should be. Um, in theory, that flood elevation follows an actual contour. It's usually along the base of the water course or the wetland. So as what we're showing here in blue is the proposed FEMA line, which is at elevation 569. And when you look at the old, um, zoning map, that's in theory where the line should have been following the entire time. What's shown up here is that, that 100-year flood elevation from 1980 without the, the contour data at that time actually climbs up the site about seven or eight feet into the site. Um, so that's, that's wildly inaccurate in the sense that from FEMA's standpoint, 100-year flood elevation follows one contour. So that was basically what we had, we had done this method based on the FEMA guidelines. We sat with the town engineer, went through our analyses prior to submitting to FEMA. And then, long story short, FEMA reviewed that over a couple of months' time uh, and agreed with our approach and our calculations to establish this is the new flood elevation. So that, that's kind of the long and short of, of where we stand and we currently have that approval in hand from FEMA. Um, as well as what we did was brought on a licensed land surveyor, uh, to prepare this map that has the meets and downs of the old line, the meets and downs of the new line, um, fully established, signed and sealed, and is currently in FEMA's possession. Um, and then this is the letter of map amendment, which are fairly regulars these days, and we do a lot of them. Um, that basically solidifies that new 569 contour as being the, the updated flood hazard area. So it's, it's nice in the sense that when an application like this comes along, it is rather important to, to establish a base flood elevation for a number of reasons. Um, but now that we've done that and it's documented through FEMA, uh, it just goes to serve the project in a better way, so. That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions. As John alluded to, it was fairly, it's a fairly straightforward process. We do quite a bit, um, through FEMA here, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the commission? So, uh, Linda, are there any, are there any callers waiting to? For a public testimony?
Uh, that I don't know. We didn't have anyone pre-register, so I think just asking if there's anyone on the call, uh, that has comments, which is to offer comments.
Okay, if anyone is on the call and would like to offer a comment, this would be the time to call in or get online. Should we wait a few minutes to see if someone shows up?
Yes, and I will, I will, um, gonna share my screen here with the information so that everyone can see that and just read it out for folks that are at home. at home. The call in number is one four zero eight six five zero three one two three and access code eight five four nine six zero three zero nine. Again, that's one four zero eight six five zero three one two three and access code eight five four nine six zero three zero nine.
Okay, we'll wait a couple of minutes to see if anyone calls in.
And while we're waiting, Mr. Chair, I will also note um that with regard to this, I don't think it made it into the packet, but Jennifer, you can you confirm the, I believe the applicant did send us their um documentation of notices uh that were required, correct?
Yes, uh absolutely, one hundred percent.
Okay. And one item I forgot to mention earlier is that we also did the public notice, required public notice registry uh referral. So all that was done as well.
Okay, uh is there any reason to keep this open? Uh if if not, I'll nominate a motion to close the hearing.
I move. Ward moves to close the hearing.
Moved by Ward, second by Ron. All in favor? Okay, the public hearing is closed, passed unanimously.
At what time?
At uh seven o'clock.
Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have another public hearing. We don't have to read the boilerplate, right, Linda? We can just go on, straight on to the uh.
No, I'm just gonna go, I'm just gonna go into the the next hearing. So it's six forty five P M. Uh we had scheduled the application of C M C Stores S P V L L C to amend Article four, section B and Article ten, sections B point ten point eight point one of the Mansfield zoning regulations related to maximum building height for townhouse units in the R A R ninety A A R H D M R and P V R A zones, P Z C file thirteen seventy three.
Okay, um that public hearing is opened at seven oh one P M. Linda, can you read the, call the roll, please?
Yes, of coursey.
Here.
Aho.
Here.
Chandey.
Chandey present.
Cooley. Cooley is here. Cotton. Here. Bertoni.
Here.
Plant.
Air.
Ron.
Here.
Ward.
Present.
Okay, uh and we have a legal notice and communications.
Yes. So uh following public hearing notice was published on June eighth two thousand and twenty one on the town's web website uh on the legal notices webpage. The Mansfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearings on June twenty first two thousand and twenty one via a web-based virtual meeting to hear comments regarding the following applications. Six forty five P M, application of C M C Stores S P V L L C to amend Article four, section B and Article ten, section B point ten point eight point one of the Mansfield zoning regulations related to maximum building height for townhouse units in the R A R ninety A R H D M R and P V R A zones. P Z C file number thirteen seventy three. Additional information regarding this application is available at H T T P S colon backslash backslash W W W dot Mansfield C T dot gov. Backslash document center backslash index backslash six forty. Or by emailing plan zone D E P T at Mansfield C T dot org. Information on how to participate in the public hearing will be on the meeting agenda, which will be posted at H T T P colon backslash backslash. W W W dot Mansfield C T dot gov backslash agenda center no less than twenty four hours before the meeting. No information from the public shall be received after the close of the public hearings. Paul Aho Chair and Benu Chandey Secretary. Uh in addition to that public hearing notice, uh we did receive a few communications which were included in your uh packet. Uh there are two which I am going to read uh into the record for you. Um the Capital Region Council of Governments uh did submit a report on May fourteenth two thousand and twenty one. Uh and I'm without, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I am going to just read, read, note that they did acknowledge receipt uh of the referral for this application. And the following, offered the following comment. The staff of the Regional Planning Commission of the Capital Region Council of Governments has reviewed this zoning referral and finds no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the concerns of neighboring towns. The public hearing date has been scheduled for June twenty first two thousand and twenty one. In accordance with our procedures, this letter will constitute final CROG action on this referral. Questions regarding this referral should be directed to Christopher Henchy. Uh the Southeast Council of Governments also provided comments on May tenth two thousand and twenty one addressed to the chair. I am writing in response to two applications to amend the zoning regulations of the town of Mansfield. The applications were referred to this agency pursuant to section eight dash three B of Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed zoning amendment text amendment seek two, and in this case, I'm only going to read number two, which pertains to this application. Permit townhouses with a garage on the first floor to be built to four stories at a maximum height of forty five feet. Based on a review of the materials submitted, I do not believe the proposed regulation amendments will have a negative intermunicipal impact. If you have any questions, please contact me at eight six zero eight eight nine two three two four. Sincerely, Samuel Alexander, A I C P Planner Three. So those are the two comments you received from the councils of governments. Uh your packet does have the referrals that were provided uh not only to CROG and C C O G, but also to N E C O G as well as the required referral to the town clerk, to the referral to adjoining communities uh and to the public notice registry. In addition, the applicant submitted uh his, their own notifications uh to the University of Connecticut, to the town clerk and to Wyndham Waterworks. All the, all those are listed on your agenda.
Okay, thank you. Uh so the floor is open to the applicants to make their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. Can you hear me all right?
Yep, we can hear you.
I'm Joe Williams. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Shipman and Goodwin in our Hartford office. And I'm proud to be here before you this evening, representing C M C Stores S P V on this application for a text amendment to your zoning regulations. Um with me this evening, who will be presenting to you, among some other team members who are present with us, are uh Mr. Chalk Lee, who is a principal with C M C Stores S P V, your applicant. Uh along with Kyle Kaleba, who is one of our architects for the project we are contemplating, and he's with Phase Zero Design. Uh Chuck will take over in a moment and give you some of the rationale and the intent behind the proposed amendment. Then Kyle will um present some of the design applications that could flow if the app, if the uh amendment is adopted. And then I'll take it back over, Mr. Chairman, and talk specifically about the proposed language and place it in the zoning context and do that piece of it. So with that brief overview, why don't I turn it to Chuck, please?
Sure, yes. So um am I allowed to share my screen at the moment? So this is the, a townhome rendering of our project. So uh my name is Chalk Lee. I am here representing C M C Stores S P V L L C. And uh to give some context around what we're asking for today, um we've been uh to to multiple hearings in the past and have previously asked for some changes to the zoning tags to accommodate uh the current uh maximum height of about forty five feet uh in the R A R ninety zone. And uh while that is sufficient in terms of the total height, uh in recent months, we uh received feedback from different stakeholders through the, through the town in terms of um the desire for townhomes uh as a um as a living product for the town of Mansfield. And so in our um assessment of how do we accommodate the desire to have more townhomes in in town, uh we came across a uh a townhome design that uh Ron Gooden and Kyle Kaleba here uh with us today have created in other towns in the past. We think it's a very appealing design that allows for uh parking to be tucked under the townhome uh product. And what this allows for uh benefits, I'll get into in a second, but um the key, the key uh regulation that we're trying to work around is to allow for um this indoor parking to not take away from the total space that we can provide to the residents and families that that we think would be eh 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 uh the the type of residents that would find this uh housing product attractive. And so what we'd like to do as part of this text amendment is to allow for some of the space that is uh above the third story to be utilized as uh living space. Um however, just to keep in mind as well that this does not exceed what the maximum height is. So there's been no change uh in regards to this design for townhomes uh as it relates to what the maximum height will be, and so it will not be adding additional stories, but really just to uh more efficiently use uh some of the space that uh would have been for a pitched roof. And so um here you see in front of you a rendering of what that could look like. You'll see that um this allows for less surface parking, all the, all vehicles are tucked under the townhomes. It allows for uh much more space for open fields uh and recreational areas. And uh here's another view from our pro, our current project at four ninety seven Mill Turnpike, which uh while we're not discussing this project specifically today, we think uh having this townhome product and this definition within the zoning regulations allows us to create a product that we think would be uh a a good fit for for what the town is looking for. And so um some of the other benefits that I'd like to talk about as well is, you know, generally allowing us for uh to utilize some of the space up here frees up the first floor, not only for parking, but also additional storage, provides room for a greater living area. Uh based on uh the zoning text currently, um there's design guidelines that um having this additional space to utilize would help us meet. For example, being able to provide a private uh outdoor balcony space um that is private to tenants and and also providing more storage, uh more so than than a typical uh garden-style apartment building would provide for. And also allowing more living space to accommodate some requirements such as um a six-person table uh in the living room with dining room. So uh we think if we had the ability to have this text amendment allow us to utilize some of the space that's still within the same height restriction, uh it would provide us with uh some flexibility to provide for a better product overall. Uh not just in our zone, but just broadly uh in terms of housing product for the town. So with that, I'll pass it over to Kyle or Ron here to uh talk a little bit about the uh layouts and the design of of the, of the townhomes.
Hi, my name is Kyle Schala, um with Phase Zero Design. Um as you can see, these townhouse units uh would definitely fit into the community. We're kind of calling it the modern-style farmhouse. Um so we're more or less envisioning brick, cardboard siding, potentially vertical board and batten, um shiplap. Um and also, as you can see on the top level, there is that outdoor balcony, which is private to each unit. Each unit, like Chalk said, would have a private garage and a private entry for each tenant. Um so giving the, you know, while living in this community, having a private residence with inside of this larger community. Um so the layouts of each unit kind of will go based on, we'll have each floor um on the basement on the lower level or the ground level would be a two-car garage with extra space in the back um for storage, for bikes, um along with the private entry um for each unit from the street and from the garage. And then on the, we call the main living level, um is a large open kitchen um to the living room and uh but digital area. This is one possible layout um with laundry and a half bath on this level. So the total townhouses are a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half baths over four floors with parking being on the ground floor. Um on the second level, which would be the sort of the, I would call it kids' level, or the, you know, the secondary bedrooms, they are both equal-sized. And they both have their own private bathrooms with a walk-in closet. And as you make all the way up to the top of the top floor, which is tucked into the roofline, you can see we have a equally large bedroom with a space sort of for like home office or like a reading nook, has its own private bathroom with access to the balcony, not through the bedroom, but through the public space. Um so it's definitely partially, it's partially covered and partially uncovered. Um so, you know, in the winter, I guess you could go out there, but during the summer, you get some shade, but during, you know, on the the spring, spring and fall, you can get some sun also. And take advantage of the views. And this floor is tucked up inside of the roofline, so we're just utilizing the space which would more or less be the attic um to make a living area. Ron, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, Kyle, I think you did a fine job.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And um now that you've heard some of the rationale and the sort of reasoning that led us to want to propose this amendment, why don't we talk about the exact language that we are proposing? Um may I share that on my screen or can, does somebody else want to bring up the amendment? Maybe I should do it. There we go. Does everyone have the zoning regulation amendment up?
Not yet. Now there it is. Okay, now we can see it.
Okay, great. It's really two amendments. One is to definitions and the next is to the um building height standard for multifamily buildings. Let me just scroll down to the second part and talk about that first. Um and our goal, as it always should be when you're proposing to amend the rules, is to work within your existing regulations and to make as limited a change as possible um while uh respecting the existing structure that you already have in the regulations and to try to accomplish an amendment to the regulations that would achieve not only our project goals, but also help the regulations change with the times and benefit the town as a whole. And that's what I hope we've done. Uh as the commission may be aware, in your recently adopted multifamily provisions in Article ten section ten A one, you allow in these four zones, R A R ninety, A R H D M R and P V R A uh multifamily buildings of three stories and up to forty feet. Uh however, the commission may approve a maximum height of up to forty five feet as part of the special permit, provided certain criteria are met. The underlying part is what we're seeking to add, so the existing language is here without any additional markings on it. So your existing criteria allow the commission to permit by special permit a multifamily building forty five feet tall uh so long as the enclosed space of the structure above thirty five feet is limited to non-tenant storage and equipment for utilities. And the proposed structure must aesthetically conform with the character of neighboring properties. And the proposed structure will not adversely affect the character of neighboring properties or adversely affect the general health, welfare or safety of the town. As you can see, we're not proposing any change to the um the back half or most of the regulation. What we, what we are proposing, as Doc and Kyle just described, is to allow within a forty-five-foot-tall townhouse building and only in townhouse-style buildings four stories as opposed to the three that are allowed right now. So to make maximum use of the space, um to allow four stories in a townhouse where the garage is on the first floor, confirming again that the maximum height shall not exceed forty five feet per townhouse. And that's measured from the average finished grade around each townhouse to the top of the roof of that townhouse. And then in all other building types, so any other type of multifamily building, the rule rule stays the same. It could go up to 45 feet tall by special permit, but the enclosed space above 35 feet is limited to storage and utility equipment. So what, what we were thinking in proposing this language, and as you, I believe you heard some already this evening, our client realized in developing its design for this product, that it can advance several of the town's housing objectives that you have articulated and its project goals for the property by maximizing the building space using a fourth floor and at the same time, keep the building height the same, disturb less of the natural resources on the site, and reduce the overall amount of asphalt surface parking by bringing some of that parking into the townhouse building itself. So that's why we are proposing four stories here in this type of building where the garage is underneath. And note that even if this amendment is adopted, even if a townhouse building is proposed that would meet the requirement of having the garage on the first floor and the overall building only being 45 feet tall, you still must comply with the last two bullet points as I mentioned, which is that the structure must aesthetically conform with the character of neighboring properties and not adversely affect the general health, welfare, or safety of the town. And of course, must satisfy the special permit standards as well. So any, any impacts that might be, that the commission might want to review in relation to a development proposal that may come forward under this proposed amendment, you would be reviewing it as you normally would under the special permit process, as it says up here, as part of the special permit for the development. So it's, I think it's important to keep in mind that if the commission were to approve this proposed text amendment, you're not allowing anything to be built necessarily. You're just allowing a proposal to come before you, complying with this proposal under a special permit application, which still must demonstrate compliance with all of your special permit criteria, giving the commission all of the same normal discretion that you have over a special permit application. And I would note, as I'm sure you'll hear in a moment, that the town attorney made a helpful suggestion to our proposed language to confirm the commission's discretion in that situation to change this language here. Four stories shall be permitted to change it to maybe permitted so long as, as, as part of the special permit application. We also have proposed, as we were, it was suggested we should do a definition of townhouse because I had realized that's not defined anywhere else in your regulations. And we've proposed a definition that comports generally with the commonly understood term in the industry. So it would be defined as a multi-story house in a row of usually similar design with common side or back walls. Fairly simple definition there. And I'm sure you'll hear your staff's report, just so I can sort of do my piece and be, and be done for now. I just want to know, we, we agree with, with everything that Linda said in her memo, specifically noting that the proposed amendment advances several goals in your plan of conservation and development, in your zoning regulations, and in Section 8-2 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Zoning Enabling Act. And, and we believe, as I mentioned in the statement of justification that we submitted, that this proposed amendment will also advance a goal that I know the commission has spoken to recently to advance more middle housing in Mansfield and, and in Connecticut. So we believe this amendment will help do that as well. So with that, we believe that our application has met all of your approval criteria for a text amendment, and we respectfully request your approval, but happy to respond any comments and answer any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from the commission?
Yes, Vera.
And, and, and then Ken. Vera first, then Ken.
How many townhouses will that, will you be building as, as planned? I counted 11 buildings or so, but how many townhouses?
Sure. So the, the site plan, while it's still being contemplated and we're still doing some design changes, we, a substantial portion of the units in our project will be townhomes. So if we were to be able to have 250 apartments or, or housing units in the entire site, half of those approximately wouldn't be townhomes.
I mean, it doesn't sound like, it sounds fairly luxurious and it doesn't sound like it's aimed at middle income folks.
Sorry, Chuck.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say that there, we are also subject to the affordable housing component within town regulations as well. And so we will, it will include a mix of both townhomes and apartment style flats that would be eligible for the affordable housing component as well.
And I would just add, middle housing, I use that term, so I'll speak to that as well. Middle housing is a term that's, that's been talked about quite a bit over the past year or so, especially as the Desegregate Connecticut campaign has moved forward. And you, you may know that the, that bill that was proposed by Desegregate Connecticut was passed by the legislature, signed late last week by Governor Lamont, and it actually contains reference to middle housing. The reference there is not as to the, it's, it's not meant to be solely affordable housing. It's not meant to be an income limitation to people at the middle income levels. It's more meant to refer to density. And there's actually a definition in that law that, that was just adopted of middle housing, talking about complexes, triplexes, townhomes, that sort of thing. So something, you know, in between a large, more dense garden style apartment building or other type of apartment building on the one hand versus single family homes on the other. It's sort of in the middle there in terms of the density. I think, at least that's how I was, I was using it.
Ken? Go ahead, Ken. Ken, I think Ken was next.
Pardon me a few seconds here. I'm good, I'm moving my computer.
Okay.
Paul, if I might, I, I just want, I, I just want to just remind commissioners that while the applicant showed you renderings of a specific project that they are working on, what is before you tonight is not a project. It is an amendment to the zoning regulations related to building height for townhouse style units. So that, I just want, again, I think, I, I think that, you know, the presentation helps visualize what might be possible under this amendment, but you are not reviewing a specific project at this time.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that clarification.
I will stop until you're done with questions and then Kevin and I will just give our, our brief present over.
Okay. Very good. Go ahead, Ken.
Based on what I've seen and listened to so far, if we were to make this amendment, it would allow that third bedroom to be built on that top floor and that space at difference between 40 and, I should say 35 and 45 feet. As I listened to the presentation, I, I would have to agree with Vera, that didn't sound very middle to me in the sense that these things would have three and a half bedroom, bathrooms. To me, that would allow three unrelated people to be living in that, but I don't see that as a family operation. I've said my piece. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Luanne.
Hi, sorry about that. I, I just have two comments. As a, as a parent with three teenagers, I could absolutely see this being a place for a family, especially with a university here that brings people in for adjunct and short-term positions. So while it does seem rather luxurious and I could also see students there, I, I can definitely see families there. So I don't have a problem with that at all. In fact, I actually, the only problem I have with the proposed amendment doesn't have anything to do with the proposed changes. It has to do with the fact that we still have the word character in this part of the regulations. And I'm wondering-
That's right. You're not supposed to use that word.
Yes. Can we, yes, because is this a time in which we could also change that or should we do that at a separate time? That's kind of a query toward Linda and towards Kevin.
Yes, immediately, if not sooner. Yes, Ken.
I'm agreeing with Luanne about that.
No. Any other question? Any other questions or comments, then we'll send it over to Linda. Okay, yes, we knew.
Yeah, I have a comment on middle housing. I believe middle housing also refers to affordability in certain ways, you know, so leaving it at that. And, you know, providing of different options for housing in this town is always good. And let us just hope that at least a portion of this housing will be geared towards families. I think that's all we, what we can do.
Yes, Katie.
What's the accessibility that should, that would be planned in a townhouse like this? Would it be all stairs or would there be an elevator?
So we are, we, we're looking into those options to allow for that. There's multiple ways in which we can accomplish, provide the accessibility options. This was actually one of the questions that came up during our application as well. And we've looked into different ways in which we can accommodate that, whether it's through a, a small elevator or certain subset of the units, or a mechanism that allows for wheelchair access along the edge of the stairs to reach the upper levels. So we can accommodate certain of our units, our townhouse units, to have those features in place, set aside specifically for those residents that would look for that type of access. So we are, we have our contractors looking into what that product could look like and providing us with different options in which to incorporate in, in some portion of our development projects.
Also too, on this technically fourth floor, counting the ride as first floor, then you've got two living floors and then you say you have another floor that would be for the utilities and for storage. And some people are saying, well, you could put a bedroom up there. How's the access to that bedroom? And isn't it only going to be five feet tall? It's only going to be for munchkins. A six foot man is not going to rent an apartment that's only got five foot ceilings.
Right. So the, the current, as it's contemplated currently is the first floor would be the garage with the two, for, for two vehicles. And then the floor immediately there, on, on top of that would be the living area, which is the entire floor living area, that would be the living and dining space. And then above that would be two bedrooms. And then the floor that I think you're alluding to, which is above that, is also another bedroom. That would be sort of the, the, the master suite for parents that will have access to the balcony as well. So yeah, so each of these floors would be approximately between probably around nine to 10 feet in height inside, so it wouldn't be impacted by that. And we, we would still be under the maximum height restriction as the zoning text currently provides for.
Chalk, if I could. Ron Gooden, Principal for Phase Zero Design. In essence, if you think about it, it's kind of like grandma's house where she had the walk-up attic and there was that really cool room upstairs. We're, we're basically using that space up in the attic potentially for that, for that last extra bedroom. So it's captured space up in that, up in that.
Also, you've got the potential that you'd have mother and father and two kids, of which could be of the age that they would be driving and have cars. Where's the third car going to be?
Linda, yes, Linda.
Sorry, I, I just, again, I, I just want to remind everyone, this is, we're getting into really specific questions regarding a, a potential project from this applicant. And it's, we're not reviewing their project. So I think, you know, questions about accessibility and whether or not you want to have regulations that require, for example, a certain number of units, you know, if, if, if you're allowing this height, do you want a certain, to have a requirement that a certain number or percentage be, have accessibility? Though, those are, I, I, I think are discussions that, to have. I, I'm just leery that we're getting into really specific questions where an architect is saying, oh, here's what we're planning. There, this is not the only applicant that could make use of this amendment if it were approved. So focusing on, you know, if you, you know, in looking at this proposed change to the regulations, you know, what, looking at, again, to the general accessibility, but please, 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 I don't want anyone listening to somehow think that, you know, whatever is being said regarding a specific project this evening is necessarily going to be true for any project that comes in if this change is adopted.
Right. Yeah. So we're, we're basically sticking to the height question right now.
Height, but again, I think you're raising, again, I think you're raising questions about accessibility, about parking and other things. I just want to make sure that it's being done in a generic fashion and that we're not delving into, again, specifics where, you know, if another project comes forward and they don't have this particular, you know, layout or floor plan that's being described, that someone says, well, wait a second, I didn't think this is what we were getting with this. So again, it, it's about the four stories, if you have a garage. And then, you know, so I'm going to stop and let you guys-
Okay. Luanne?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the point that with the garage on the first floor with this design, one of the nice things about this is it does, it would decrease the overall site impervious pavement if this is also decreasing the number of parking spaces that are needed outside of the footprint of the buildings. And I think that's a good thing for the town because it would also help with ours, with stormwater as well.
Ken?
As I understand this, if we approve this particular amendment, this is not the only project that could possibly have this particular style of, of building structure. Am I correct?
Yes. As, as the regulation language states, it applies to the RER90, ARH, DMR, and PVRA zones. So yeah, I appreciate Linda clarifying that and I, I tried to do so, but I probably could have been more clear about it. What we're, what we're showing you is illustrative of what could happen with the regulation. And so we're trying to walk a fine line between trying to remove the unknown for the commission so you could see an example, but it's just an example. It's not even our final plan necessarily that we're filing, but an example of what it could look like if, if you allow the regulation. But yeah, people could come up with different designs on different sites and in any one of those four zones potentially could make application.
Any other questions? Okay, Linda, you, go ahead, Vera.
We had, we went back and forth in discussions and regulatory review, and what we were trying to get away from were the tall buildings. If we're going to allow that extra height, you can believe that the developments going in after this will also take, want to make use of that height. So I'm not sure we want to go that route.
Is it, is it extra height or is it the same height? I believe it's the same height.
Yeah.
It is, it is the same height. The, the regulation language that's already there says the commission may approve a maximum height of up to 45 feet as part of the special permit for the development.
Under certain conditions, I thought, but I thought-
Right, under certain conditions. And the existing language says it can go up to 45 feet by special permit, but between 35 and 45 feet of that building can only be used for storage. So all we're asking you to do is allow us to use that final 10 feet for another living story, but still the building remains at 45 feet. And we added language to be very clear about that. The maximum height shall not exceed 45 feet per townhouse. So the building height will not change compared to what you allow already.
Okay. Sarah?
Correct me if I'm wrong. I feel like we made, we amended this language sometime, not fairly recently, going from 35 feet to 45- sometime, not fairly recently, going from 35 feet to 45 feet, with the understanding that that would only be for aesthetics and it would not be used. Am I correct in that?
Yes. You you allow from 40 up to 45 feet by special permit with that restriction above 35 feet for storage.
So this really is is completely changing that.
Well, it's, it is changing the part that said above 35 feet has to be used for storage and equipment. And that's because, that's why we tried to explain to you sort of why we were doing that and didn't do it before. And that is our our design team as a whole, and my client took a look at what they would like to try to propose based on feedback input preferences we're hearing from a number of sources. And in looking then at shifting around half of the proposed units to townhouses and then engaging the design team, our architects, to look at what would be a very nice type of product to propose for townhomes. Then the discussion and the analysis evolved to looking at this townhome design that has the garage on the first floor. And the way that that really works, we believe, is to allow that fourth story to be used. So that's how we kind of came around to proposing this. But yes, it it is a change from what you approved previously, but it's for those reasons.
I know this is a kind of a theoretical discussion in terms of design. How large do you anticipate these being? Square footage wise?
It's approximately 2,200 feet per townhome.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Linda, take it away.
So as Mr. Williams had mentioned in my staff report, you will see recommendations for some revisions to the language that the applicant had proposed. And these recommendations did come from Kevin Dunne, who is our town attorney during an initial review early on. And he is present this evening to give you any additional, answering additional questions that you may have on this as referenced. So I'm just going to, I I believe Mr. Williams did mention, but the the primary change is currently the language that was proposed by the applicant said that four stories shall be permitted in townhouses having a garage on the first floor. The change that we are recommending is to delete the word shall and replace it with may. So four stories may be permitted in townhouses having a garage on the first floor, provided the maximum height shall not exceed 45 feet per townhouse as measured measured from average finish grade of each townhouse to the top of the roof of that townhouse. And then adding the following phrase as part of the special permit for the development. And again, this was to really reinforce that the intent of this language was not to say that if you are in these zones, you are automatically entitled to 45 feet if you're doing townhouses with garages on the first floor. But rather to open up that option to the discretion, the discretion of the commission as part of the special permit process. In terms of Ms. Cooley's comments, you called out what I was noticing as I was, as looking at this. And as referenced, the Public Act that was recently passed that really had its genesis with the desegregate Connecticut initiative essentially includes language that says that commissions cannot deny something based on character unless it's tied to physical, distinct physical characteristics. So, you know, I would defer to our town attorney. My guess is that if I did a search for character in our zoning regulations, we probably use it fairly frequently and are going to have to do some cleanup on this. You know, but potentially, you know, to to, if you wanted to try and tackle this one section, unless Mr. Dunne had an objection, you could look at changing the language from character to, you know, conforms with the the physical context of neighboring properties. And not, you know, again, and similarly in the fourth bullet, will not adversely affect, you know, the honestly, I I might actually just take that out advert, because you've already covered it in the third bullet and just take out character in the in the fourth bullet and rely on adversely affect the general health, welfare, or safety of the town.
That's redundant, I think, yeah.
So. Anyway, that, if you have any questions for myself, again, Mr. Dunne is also here. I apologize. He did, he did give us written opinions on Thursday, but we did not get them uploaded to the packet. So he is here to verbally present his legal opinion with regard to this application and the next.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead with your verbal. There you go.
Thank you. I I think Linda covered it. I was here, if there's any other questions on it, be happy to, but that summarized my opinion on it, so.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any, any questions for Kevin Dunne? Okay, do we have any public comments awaiting and airing?
I'll repeat, if you are interested in speaking on this item, please call 1-408-650-3123 and enter access code 854-960-309.
Okay, we'll wait a couple of minutes, see if anyone calls in.
In looking just at the list of participants in the meeting, they appear to be related to the applications for the hearings that you've had this evening as well as, I believe, some residents who are interested in discussion on one of your old business items this evening.
Okay, all right. Okay, so is there any reason, any reason to keep this hearing open? If not, I'll entertain a motion to to close the hearing.
Ward moves to close the hearing.
Okay. Moved by Ward, second by Ron. All in favor? Okay. The hearing is closed.
At what time?
At 7:46. Thank you all. Thank you. Okay, so we have one more.
We have one more. So the next item on your agenda, which was noted as 7:00 PM, is the PCC initiated amendment to the zoning regulations for moratorium on cannabis establishments, PCC File 907-51. As this is a continuation of the public hearing, the public hearing notice was read at the June 7, 2021 meeting. I will note that you do have several communications listed on your agenda, including one from Ron Cotterill, dated May 10, 2021, Martina Wharton dated May 30, 2021, Town Council Minutes dated May 10, 2021. And then we do have comments from the Capital Region Council of Governments and the Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments that need to be read into the record. So, May 14, 2021, comments provided by the Capital Region Council of Governments. They acknowledged receipt of the referral. And their comment is as follows. The staff of the Regional Planning Commission of the Capital Region Council of Governments has reviewed this zoning referral and finds no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the concerns of neighboring towns. The public hearing date has been scheduled for June 7, 2021. In accordance with our procedures, this letter will constitute final CROG action on this referral. Questions concerning this referral should be directed to Christopher Henchy, respectfully submitted Jennifer Bartis Early, Chairman of the Regional Planning Commission, and Brenda Malone, Vice Chairman of the Regional Planning Commission. The Southeast Council of Governments communication was dated May 20, May 10, rather, 2021, in address to the Chair. I am writing in response to two applications to amend the zoning regulations of the town of Mansfield. The applications were referred to this agency pursuant to Section 8-3B of the Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed zoning text amendment, seat Q, and in this case, I will only read number one, which pertains to this hearing, establish a moratorium on cannabis establishments, which have the same definition used in Governor's Bill Number 888. Based on a review of the materials submitted, I do not believe the proposed regulation amendments will have a negative intermunicipal impact. If you have any questions, please contact me at 860-889-2324. Sincerely, Samuel Alexander, AICP Planner 3. In addition to those communications, I will just note for the record that you do have copies, not only of the public hearing legal notice, but of the referral to the town clerk, the public notice registry referral, and the referral to adjoining municipalities and all three councils of governments, including the Northeast Connecticut Council of Governments, which is required under statute. Since this is a PCC initiated amendment, I will just give a brief overview for the public.
Linda, I think, I think we, technically, we should open the hearing, right?
Oh, thank you. Did it again, Paul?
Okay. So the hearing is opened at 7:49 PM. And then the roll call is?
Of course.
Here.
Aho.
Here.
Chandy. Cooley.
Cooley is here.
I did see Chandy raise her hand away. For Tony.
For Tony here.
Plant.
Plant here.
Ron.
Ron here.
Ward.
Ward here.
I don't think it's a cardinal sin that we heard about the communications before it opened.
So you're agreeing to incorporate all of those, Mr. Chair?
Yes. So we can go straight to the applicant presentation.
All right. As a reminder, just for the public, if you're interested in providing comments on this, the number is 1-408-650-3123, access code 854-960-309. In this particular case, the applicant is actually the Planning and Zoning Commission. So you have initiated the proposed amendments. And the purpose of the amendments is to, is to establish a temporary unlimited nine-month moratorium on cannabis establishments to give the commission time to respond to the new legislation legalizing production and sale of cannabis and marijuana in Connecticut. Since the original, since you actually, you put forward this amendment, there have been some changes to the legislation, while I'd say probably many changes, but a few which are noted in my staff memo to you dated June 2, 2021. Couple of potential changes that you may want to make. The first one is that we inadvertently left out the term micro cultivator when we were preparing the original moratorium that is included in the statutes. And there is a definition, which is a person engaged in the cultivation, growing, and propagation of the cannabis plant at an establishment containing not less than 2,000 square feet and not more than 5,000 square feet of grow space prior to any expansion authorized by the commissioner. So staff would recommend that you do add that, not only the definition, but also the listing of a micro cultivator under the definition of cannabis establishment. The second change that the commission may want to consider is regarding dispensary facilities and producers. So this is basically related to medical marijuana, which, as you know, has been legal for a few years now in Connecticut under very strict licensing procedures from the state of Connecticut. We do have a dispensary facility in Mansfield. The original bill that had been proposed by the governor when it came to zoning language essentially said that did not include producers and dispensary facilities under the cannabis establishments and in our ability from a zoning perspective to regulate those types of establishments. The most recent bill that was adopted, I believe, just from the the versions that I had seen, took out that limitation. So if this is something that in terms of the moratorium, again, we already have, we have a licensed facility. It it is not going to preclude them from functioning. It would preclude them from applying to expand their facility during the moratorium if you chose to add producer and dispensary facility to the definition of cannabis establishment. And with the exception of producers and dispensary facilities is defined in Chapter 420F of Connecticut General Statutes. So that, that's a summary of the proposed amendments. And again, this really, when we discussed this with the commission and you initiated it, the 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 feeling of of the commission was that you needed time to consult with other town agencies such as the Town Council, the Agriculture Committee, the Economic Development Commission, the Town University Relations Committee, to to really identify and and think through, you know, where these different types of facilities might be permitted and under what conditions. And with the legislation being passed by both the Senate and the House last week, the the time and pieces of it becoming, becoming effective very soon, we wanted to make sure that you you have the ability to consider this tonight. And I will defer to Mr. Dunne in terms of the effective date. I know there were changes last minute, in the middle of last week.
So this discussion is very timely with July 1 coming up.
Correct.
So what are, what are the, what are the time? What happens on July 1?
Well, there's a number of provisions, most of the July 1 ones deal specifically with criminal charges with regard to possession of marijuana. There's a lead-in process that has to deal with getting licensed and approved to to do some of these other retail licensings that's on there. Those are effective generally in October. So even if someone were to put in an application on July 2, it would likely be simply to deny it on the basis that they weren't licensed yet from the state of Connecticut. There was one other town, I believe Trumbull, I'm not positive on that, passed a prohibition into their zoning regs just the other night, which is also permitted under that. But the, getting the nine-month moratorium in effective before the July 1 date just eliminates any doubt about someone trying to come in and get some sort of permit application started, even if it it takes longer to get the licensing on the backside of that, so.
Okay, very good. Thank, thank you for that clarification. Okay, any other questions from the commission? For either Linda or Kevin?
Mr. Chair, I I will note that the Town Council in their discussion of this specifically requested that the commission not take the full nine months and really try and and move regulation changes forward as expeditiously as possible. So I did, I did want to highlight that.
We will take that under advisement. Yes, Ken?
Mr. Chairman, I I would suggest, or I should say, would we be taking this to regulatory review first? And I ask that as a question.
I think so, I would assume so, yeah. And 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 getting input from other committees.
Correct. All of the other groups that we listed.
Yeah, and then coming back to the full commission.
When you say that, Ken, when you say this, I I presume you mean regulations, not the moratorium itself.
Correct, following.
Okay, thank you.
I am making an assumption, yes.
Do we have anyone who's called in? Benu? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a suggestion. Had a major regulation task that we undertook. We kind of had a special workshop, so I was wondering if that is something we want to consider, like a weekend or a special evening, you know, one hour where all members get a chance to listen, so, you know.
I think that's a good, I think that's a great idea. Yeah. Yeah. Good idea.
Thanks.
I think there's consensus on that. Okay, I see heads nodding.
So, Mr. Chair, I think at this point, I would just ask, you can ask if there's anyone who is logged in or is called in who wishes to speak on this.
Okay, is there anyone who is logged in or called in who would wish to speak on this? We'll give it a minute or so.
And we we have had that phone number up on the screen for, during this, during the presentation. And again, it's one. And again, it's one four zero eight six five zero three one two three, access code eight five four nine six zero three zero nine.
Yes, Luanne?
I just have a question. The town council has asked that we not take the full nine months. If we pass our moratorium with the nine-month provision, does that preclude us from taking that nine months? I mean, could we, could we act quicker, I guess?
I'm assuming that nine months would be the maximum, but not, not the minimum.
Correct.
We had a simple, remember we had a moratorium for some, a few years ago, right, for housing applications of any kind?
Yeah.
And that did run out. When it got to the end, it ran out. That's what happens to moratoriums. You either do something or you don't do something, and then it eventually runs out. Okay, is there any reason to keep this hearing open? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close. Ken?
Move to close the hearing on the moratorium for cannabis.
Second by Plant, on favor. Okay, passed unanimously, I believe. Vera, you said, you raised your hand? Yes, okay, very good, passed unanimously. And the hearing is closed at eight PM. So now we can move on to old business. And the first old business is the, the changing the flood hazard zone, if you remember the first hearing tonight. So let's, let's discuss that and see if we have a consensus on that subject. Go ahead, Vera.
I see no problem with it.
Okay. Anyone see any problem with that? Ken?
I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, don't need to spend a lot of time on this one. We, oh, there's an approval motion that can be put on the screen. There it is. Someone with very good eyesight.
Can't read them.
Has to be someone with better eyesight than I have. There we go, that's getting clear, okay. Would like to put that forward.
All started.
Okay, thank you.
I would move to approve the application of KRCL LLC and ENI Associates LLC, applicants' owners, and Haven Communities applicant, file number thirteen seventy-one, dated April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, to rezone approximately two thousand six hundred and thirty-four acres on three parcels located at seventeen seventeen, comma seventeen thirty-three and seventeen fifty-three Stores Road. Assessors parcels, parcel IDs eight point one five point ten, comma eight point one five point nine, comma and eight point one five eight, comma, respectively, from flood hazard FH to Plan Business Three, PB Three, as shown on the Loma exhibit map revised to May third, two thousand twenty-one, prepared by Control Point Associates and the Zone Change Map dated four thirty, two thousand twenty-one, prepared by Bowler, and is heard at a public hearing on June twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. This zone change shall become effective as of June thirtieth, two thousand two one. And approving this, do I go on or not?
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry.
Um, Vera, just one correction.
Yeah.
Two point six three four acres, not two thousand six hundred and thirty-four.
That sounded like a lot. Where is that?
That's a big project.
Two point six three four acres, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's much better. In approving this application, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered all public hearing testimony and communications. In accordance with the approval criteria identified in Article thirteen, Section D of the zoning regulations, the commission makes the following findings. I can't move the screen up.
It's being moved.
Okay, one, the application is complete and contains all required information. Two, the proposal is consistent with the underlying future land use designation of mixed-use center assigned to the subject property, as well as goals and strategies of the Mansfield Tomorrow Plan of Conservation and Development, related to preserving rural character and the majority of town by directing growth to areas that support smart growth. Furthermore, the future land use map specifically notes that, quote, "flood zone data is from most recent FEMA mapping done in nineteen eighty and is for the general reference, is for general reference only," quote. Three, the proposal is consistent with the statutory goals identified in Section eight point two of the Connecticut general statutes and other zoning purposes cited in Article one of Mansfield zoning regulations. Four, the application has comprehensively considered the size and physical characteristics of the subject area, the character and supply of land currently zoned in the subject classification, and the effect of the proposal on existing land uses in the surrounding area. Five, the amendments will promote the public's health, safety, property values, and general welfare. Furthermore, the commission has adopted the subject zoning map amendment as it brings the flood hazard zoning designation for the subject properties into conformance with the boundary of the special flood hazard areas as determined by FEMA in the letter of map amendment determination document, friends removal, dated May eleventh, two thousand two one. Is there more?
That is it.
That's it, okay, moved by Ward, second by Ron. Those words, characters, keep popping up there.
Thank you.
So.
For the record, where that refers to, I mean, those, those are, that's what our plan and our zoning regulations say.
Okay, so we can, we can cite their own.
We'll have to go back and address that. And again, the statute specifically says you cannot deny something on the basis of character unless it's based on specifics, and you can't deny it on immutable characteristics such as income, race, ethnicity, et cetera.
Okay, so we'll leave it in for now. Any discussion? Those in favor? Passed unanimously. Okay. Is the utilization of the building height, utilization of the forty-five feet building height. Discussion? Ken?
I'm going to oppose the change. It seems to me that, you know, Sarah pointed out earlier that some months ago, we made a deliberate change not to use that additional space, and that this was going to be kind of pro forma for design purposes rather than for living space. Secondly, and I think maybe as importantly, once we make this change, it becomes available for other developments, and I'm not sure that that's an area we want to go into. In fact, I'm certain we don't want to go into that.
Katie?
I agree with Ken. It's, I just don't want them putting in a third bedroom in a space that shouldn't be. I think we should leave it the way it is.
Luanne?
I'm going to disagree with you, Ken, I'm sorry about that. I respect that, the whole conversation that we had about building height, and I think that's absolutely right. But I think the limitation that is put in this regulation about there must be a garage on the first floor is a good counter to that, because I like the fact that it takes away park, necessary parking spaces, which limits the amount of impervious pavement that we have. And I also live in a neighborhood of single-family homes with several rentals that are always snapped up by families with multiple children, who tell us every single year, and I can think of one house that's had four families in the last six years, and they have always told us their difficulty in finding enough space. And these are families with young children, sometimes three children, the last family had five children, and they had an incredibly difficult time finding a place to rent in Mansfield that they could afford in a short amount of time. So I can completely see this as a, as something that families would, in fact, rent, and it would provide the kind of housing that isn't available here, or at least not available in very large quantity. So I, I like the fact that it's limited by having to have a garage, that it's not increasing our overall height, and the fact that the change from shall to may means that we still maintain control. So if this is a design that we don't think meets the criteria that we would like to see in Mansfield, we still have the ability to deny that kind of a permit, because that's a special permit. So for that reason, I think it's okay.
Okay, Bino? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with what Luanne is saying. If we are anyway giving the height, we might as well use it for something that benefits us in another way. And this is increasing density and reducing the impact of development in a more restricted area. And at the same time, like Luanne said, we are giving more options to, to, and that is, that is where I think desegregate was heading towards, you know, providing that middle housing, more affordable housing for that middle group that we lack, this town lacks. And this may have arrived by accident, but it's something that we can consider, and maybe the developers had their own motives to come forward with this plan. But at the end of the day, it may benefit us, you know, and the smart move from shall to may still gives us the option to approve or disapprove each individual application.
Vera?
I just have a general comment on this. I agree with the change in the wording, allows us to have more control on this, but I don't think we'll see this as what you're thinking of. I don't think you can, can count on this being, quote, "middle housing." I think it might be popular for what it offers, and I don't disagree with that, but I don't see how it does the service to middle-income families looking for housing. I'm not sure the price will be in their range. I'm just saying that for future, we don't know what the price is, they don't know what the price is probably now, but I'm just saying, it's not as advertised as middle housing to me.
Dorian?
I do like the idea, the concept with the garage underneath, utilizing all this space, but my concern, is it going to be priced in a way that families will be welcome there? Or is it going to be another Oaks on the Square where it's so expensive, they have to do individual people per bedroom?
Carlita, do you have an idea?
I tend to agree with what Luanne was saying. I'm, and I'm not sure that we'd be hitting the target income groups that we'd hope to. I'd really like to see us focus on moderate workforce housing level as well as middle income, so a combination of the two.
From, from the point of view of an economist, the more you utilize those forty-five feet, potentially the more affordable it can be. If you, if you force the last ten feet to be basically underutilized, that increases the cost per square foot. So I think, even though it may not be affordable, it'll be more affordable by using every single possible inch of those forty-five feet. Yes, Dorian?
I have, I agree with Luanne, the concept and everything, but as long as we have the wording in there so that we can be, you know, careful not to do this in a way where people will automatically say, well, you approved it here, you have to approve it there.
Right, we don't have to approve it everywhere.
Right.
Yes, go ahead, Bino?
Yeah, and the example that was presented to us is just an example, you know, there could be a million other scenarios that we are right now not thinking about, so. And, you know, like, Paul, like you said, you know, going up will, will impact affordability, but then they don't have to spend land on providing parking and all the other stuff that goes with our, you know, the storm water management plan that they have to spend. So, definitely will provide an option to the town, and who knows, you know, all these developments, we are, we are actually gambling on them, that they will achieve the goals that we are setting.
Any other comments? Great discussion. It's more fun when it's not unanimous. So. We, should we move forward to a vote? We have a motion, I believe, that has been prepared.
So, Mr. Chair, you have two options, you're, there's, you don't have unanimity, so you can either have, you know, a volunteer work on an approval motion and a denial motion. We do have a draft approval motion, just in case, just be, quite frankly, given the length of your agenda these days, we try and, if we think there might be consensus, put together a motion that can be put forward.
Okay, so, so if, let me, if I understand this correctly, when, when we are divided, it's better to put it off to the next meeting?
Well, Ken shaking his head, no, so, you know, you have the option, someone can put forward an approval motion tonight and you can see how it goes, or you can defer to the next meeting, and have, you know, two members, one work on an approval motion, one work on a denial motion.
Vera?
Well, I think you should just go ahead with the approval motion and see how the vote falls out.
Okay, okay, let's, let's do that. Okay, would someone like to put that forward?
I'll do it. I can.
Thank you.
Me, Of coursey?
Yes, yes.
To approve amendments to Article four, Section B, and Article ten, Section B dot ten, dot A, dot one, of the Mansfield zoning regulations dated April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, file number thirteen seventy-three, related to maximum building height for townhouses in the RAR ninety, AR eight, HDMR, and PVRA zones, subject to the revisions noted below. The subject zoning regulation amendments were presented at a public hearing on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, and filed prior to the hearing with the Mansfield Town Clerk. These amendments shall become effective on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. The amendments to Section ten dot B dot ten dot A dot one shall be revised to read as follows. One, RAR ninety, ARH, DMR, and PVRA zones. Maximum building height shall be three stories up to forty feet, provided the commission may approve a maximum height of up to forty-five feet as part of the special permit. For the development provided, all of the following criteria are met. Four stories may be permitted in townhouses having a garage on the first floor, provided the maximum height shall not exceed forty-five feet per townhouse as measured from the average finished grade of each townhouse to the top of the roof of that townhouse as part of the special permit for the developments. In all other building types, the enclosed space of the proposed structure above thirty-five feet shall be limited for use as non-tenant storage and/or areas for accommodating equipment used to operate such proposed structures utilities. The proposed structure aesthetically conforms with the physical context of neighboring properties, and the proposed structure will not adversely affect the general health, welfare, or safety of the town.
There's more.
Okay.
There we go.
In approving the amendments to the zoning regulations, the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed and considered all public hearing testimony and communications, including reports from the CCOG and
CROG.
CROG Regional Planning Commissions, Mansfield's Director of Planning and Development and the Mansfield Town Attorney. The commission makes the following findings in approval of these amendments. The amendments help to implement Goals seven point four, eight point one, and eight point two of the Mansfield Tomorrow Plan of Conservation and Development, related to supporting development of a wide range of housing options and promoting high-quality design. The amendments are consistent with the statutory goals identified in Section eight dash two of the Connecticut General Statutes and other zoning purposes cited in Article One of Mansfield Zoning Regulations. The amendments are appropriately worded, legally sound, and suitably coordinated with other provisions in the Mansfield Zoning Regulations. The amendments will promote the public's health, safety, property values, and general welfare. Furthermore, the amendments as revised by this motion are adopted as they will help to expand the development of housing options by providing design flexibility for townhouse-style dwellings where appropriate as determined by the commission through the special permit process.
Move by Ofcusi.
Mr. Chairman, I actually have a question. Please don't hate me for this, but I believe that there's a problem. If we could go back up, please. Thank you. In the first sentence, it says, permit for the development provided all following criteria are met, which is how the original regulation read. But by adding this provision, that limits our ability to approve something with a maximum height of forty-five feet because then must have a garage.
So what would be the fix, the grammatical fix? Take out the word all?
Yeah, you could take out the word all.
Provided the following criteria are met.
But we still want the final three to all have to be off, is that correct? So it might be a little tricky.
Yeah. I think the first two bullets should be one bullet with an or.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Something like that.
Yep.
Yeah, like an or, no. Those two bullets should be optional, and then the second, they would have to go with all of them.
Good, yep, that fixes it. Sarah, are you okay with that change? Okay, so it's still
I think we need all back, right?
Yes, we need all back, yep. Okay, so moved by Ofcusi. Is there a second?
This is Cooley, I would second this.
Okay, second by Cooley. Any further discussion? We should call a roll, right, Linda?
Yes.
Okay.
Ofcusi.
Ofcusi, aye.
Aho.
Aye.
Jandy.
Aye.
Cooley.
Aye.
Cotton.
Aye.
For Tony.
No.
Ron, oh, sorry, Plant.
Aye.
Ron.
No.
Ward.
No.
So it looks like it's six to three.
Okay, so the motion passes.
With, for Tony, Ron, and Ward voting no.
Okay. So we'll move on to the moratorium on cannabis establishments, which is our own amendment. Is there any discussion of that? If not, we have a, we must have a motion set up, right, Linda?
We do.
Okay. Okay, who would like to put that forward?
I'll put that one.
Go ahead.
Bron. Moved to approve, subject to the revisions noted below, Amendment to Article Three of the Mansfield Zoning Regulations dated May third, twenty-twenty-one, file number nine oh seven dash fifty-one, to establish a nine-month temporary and limited moratorium on applications related to cannabis establishments. The subject zoning regulation amendments were presented to public hearings on June seven, twenty-twenty-one, and June twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, and filed prior to the hearing with the Mansfield Town Clerk. The amendments shall be effective as of June thirty, twenty-twenty-one. In approving the amendments to the zoning regulations, the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed and considered all public hearing testimony and communications, including reports from CROG and CCOG Regional Planning Commissions, Mansfield's Director of Planning and Development, and the Mansfield Town Attorney. Based on this testimony, Section three dot A dot two shall be amended to as one, the following definition of microcultivator. Microcultivator, a person engaged in the cultivation, growing, and propagation of the cannabis plant at an establishment containing not less than two thousand square feet and not more than five thousand square feet of grow space prior to any expansion authorized by the commissioner. Revised the definition of cannabis establishment to read as followed. Cannabis establishment, cultivator, microcultivator, retailer, hybrid retailer, food and beverage manufacturer, product manufacturer, product packager, and delivery service. The commission makes the following findings in adoption of these amendments as modified by this approval motion. These amendments are adopted pursuant to the provisions and authority granted by Section eight dash two of the Connecticut General Statutes, which grant the PZC the following. The authority to regulate the location and use of buildings, structures, and land for trade, industry, residence, and other purposes. The mandate to promote health, general welfare, prevent the overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, and to facilitate the adequate provision for transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other requirements. The mandate to give reasonable consideration as to the physical character and context of zoning district and its particular suitability for particular uses, with a view to conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout such municipality. Two, the amendments promote the purposes of zoning regulations identified in Article One of Mansfield Zoning Regulations by encouraging the most appropriate use of land and protecting and enhancing the value of properties and protecting and enhancing the natural and scenic resources. Three, the proposed amendments will help implement Goal eight dot two of the Mansfield Tomorrow Plan of Conservation and Development, P O C D, by providing the commission with time necessary to update the zoning regulations related to cannabis establishments. The nine-month term of the moratorium is considered reasonable based on the adoption by the Connecticut General Assembly on June seventeen, twenty-twenty-one of legislation to legalize the production and sale of cannabis marijuana in Connecticut. Furthermore, the scope of the moratorium is limited to applications related to sale and production of cannabis and does not prevent other types of residential or commercial development during the moratorium. The amendments are considered acceptably worded, suitably coordinated with related zoning provisions.
Move by Ron.
Before I second it, before I second it, may I? Can you go back to the beginning? And explain to me, I just wanted to be sure we wanted to leave out right there the producer, the dispensary facility. Did we want to leave that out of the moratorium?
The reason that was highlighted is that if you add the producer dispensary facility language in the beginning and take out with the exception, this would include essentially medical marijuana facilities, dispensaries, and producers within the moratorium. If you were to take out that highlighted language and just have it be cultivator, microcultivator, retailer, hybrid retailer, food and beverage manufacturer, product manufacturer, product packager, and/or delivery service with the exception of producers and dispensary then the medical marijuana producers and dispensary facilities would not be covered by the moratorium.
So Ken didn't read that, so is it correct as he read it?
Yes, because I think he read producer dispensary facility and struck out with the exceptions. So by doing that, it means that medical marijuana establishments are included in the moratorium.
Okay, is there a second?
I think, no, I think Ken missed reading the producer dispensary facility.
Oh, okay.
That is correct.
And he skipped over both when he read it.
Okay.
Yeah.
For the rest, read producer dispensary facility, and then following with cultivator, microcultivator.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, okay.
Okay, I thought he had said, so Ken, your intent was to include producer and dispensary facility and put a period after delivery service in the remainder.
That's correct.
Okay, good catch, Vera. Okay, we've crossed the Ts and dotted the Is. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Ward. Any discussion? We should do a roll call, right, Linda?
Yes. Ofcusi.
Aye.
Aho.
Aye.
Jandy.
Jandy, aye.
Cooley.
Cooley, aye.
Aye.
For Tony.
Aye.
Plant.
Aye.
Ron.
Ron, aye.
Ward.
Ward, aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. I suggest that we take a ten-minute break because I don't think we should go more than two hours at a time without a break. That's the Aho rule. And so let's take a break until eight forty-three. And, uh, so let's, let's take a break until, uh, eight forty-three. And, uh, so let's, let's take a break until, uh, eight forty-three. And, uh, so let's, let's take a break until, uh, eight forty-three. We almost, there she is, all right. All right, so we have, uh, another matter to discuss here and that is the Agbotic Greenhouse Project at four thirty-eight Browns Road. We finally, we finally get to discuss among ourselves after listening to many hours of testimony. Who would like to lead off? Vera?
Well, since my mom was the naysayer, um, I had several concerns about this project. Um, not that I didn't think it was a worthy one and not that I didn't think it could maybe benefit from being somewhere else. But legally, if it's allowed in this, if it's allowed wherever, I'm having interference.
Uh, you're, it says that yours, yours, okay, all right, okay.
Um, so, uh, we know that legally they can do, uh, they can use this land, land use is, is okay. I had a question about, we had questions about night glow and they assured us that they can use the screens. I had questions about odors and I think that's, uh, one of the major concerns and, uh, they say they can, uh, that, I don't know how they can mitigate that to the fact that it won't bother the neighbors, but I don't know what recourse the neighbors have if they don't. So, um, that's a concern how that could be controlled, especially if they're men, if they're growing hemp. Um, and then I, I guess, uh, the, um, the main concern too was the water usage and they, their, their expert says that, uh, the well should be a thousand feet away from neighboring wells which should protect the neighboring wells from that having any effect on, on their problems. Um, or, or exacerbating any of their, uh, problems in the summer, uh, that's due to other things. But we didn't have our own expert talking about that and that kinda bothers me. I wish I knew more about it. That's kind of why I wished we left the hearing open so we could maybe get that answered. Um, and as far as the traffic is concerned, they talk about four hundred and fifty to five hundred trucks going in. That would, that seemed awful to me, but I guess if it's spread over four or five months or however long they think it's gonna take to build this thing, maybe it's not so bad. And, and, and with the traffic, um, I think the town has a, a responsibility to these, to this neighborhood to, uh, crack down on the speedsters. Everybody, including myself, have the speed on that road. They're going to school to pick up their kids. They're late to get there. I mean, they're going across to, uh, one ninety-five, um, it's, uh, it's not, it's not a scenic road. Or maybe you have scenic, uh, uh, venues, but, but, but the, but it's a connector road. It's a connector from thirty-two to one ninety-five or connector from thirty-two to, uh, Spring Hill School, their middle school. So I think that's an issue that should be raised with the town to try to make that road safer. So those are my concerns, the, the control of the odor and, and the water. And I, I can't, I can't argue what the developer gives us. I have nothing to go back with. That's said my piece.
Ken?
Um, I'm inclined to support the project. Um, I think this is agricultural land. I think it's going to be used for an agricultural purpose. Um, in using somewhat of a what-about argument. Um, if this had been almost any other kind of agricultural use um, in the town of Mansfield, we would not have had a special permit hearing. If it had been a dairy farm or, uh, a beef or poultry or, uh, pig farming, uh, they would be able to grow corn. There would be manure. There'd be water issues. If it were a dairy farm, there would be more water used than I believe this six greenhouse operation would be. I do agree with Vera about traffic, um, or speeding. I think every one of us here who lives on a collector road in town, um, probably has experienced that. Um, it, it's kinda like Walt Kelly when he was drawing Pogo back in the fifties and sixties. And he said, "We have met the enemy and he is us." Um, we're the ones responsible for the speeding. I would suggest that, you know, we do something about it, but at the same time, people on Browns Road need to as well. Um, no, I, I think this is a project that should go forward.
Diane?
My main concern is, um, I know for a fact certain, um, houses and stuff there do lose water throughout the year. And they're saying they're being limited with their water. Doesn't seem like, I don't know, I'm not sure I agree with what they're saying. The other thing is the major traffic concern there. They said it would be traffic going in and out only so many times a month, but aren't they growing stuff that's gonna be trucked out of there? Their answer was they were bringing sod in and stuff, maybe once a month, but it's not that way. If you're, you're growing a product, you're going to take that product out, there's gonna be in and out all the time. I'm a little concerned about, about those. I think it's a great concept. I just don't know if Browns Road is the place for it.
Katie?
Uh, I'm in support of the project. Uh, I've done a little bit of research on my own on, uh, the growing of hemp. And it is a su- sustainable substance that can be used in a lot of different ways to get rid of our dependence on even paper bags or plastic bags, and I definitely wanna do that. Um, I have seen other hydroponic type places. Uh, Disney World is an example. They produce all of the vegetables for Disney World in their own hydroponics. So it's definitely a good agricultural thing. And maybe we will benefit from it if they do open a farm stand. Uh, but I think it's farming in the future. We're not killing the land with overgrowing on it and we're not putting in, uh, fertilizers and stuff like that that can harm the land, the ground and pollute the ground's water. Uh, yes, I have a concern about the water and the water table for the people. I've seen housing developments go in and, yes, they'll drill for their wells and everybody else's dries up. Um, so that is a concern, but I don't know if we can regulate that. But I am for this.
Benu? Did I see your hand?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with the previous speakers. Our three main issues, uh, I think are odor from the hemp growing and the water and the traffic. Uh, I, uh, so one by one, the odor, one way to control it is saying no to hemp or, you know, putting restrictions in our conditional approvals, saying they have to have charcoal filters or have some kind of recourse if there are odor issues. Can we have some sort of recourse? Um, the water, really good points. If it was any other type of farming or residential development, the neighbors would have had the same issue. So, uh, out there, and then the traffic, um, you know, it seems like maybe with any other farming in the beginning, the construction till they bring the, you know, the, the dirt or whatever is needed, maybe there will be increased traffic, but then on a regular basis, it seems like the, you know, the trucks there are not that many, but Browns Road, yes. In the recent, recently, it has become really hazardous driving on that or walking on that road. So that is something for the town to do. So, you know, it's, it's a difficult decision. And, you know, it, it seems like a NIMBY issue, but if we were on Browns Road, we, we may have had the same concerns. So it's a difficult decision.
Yes, Vera?
Uh, maybe is, uh, Attorney Danine still on board?
Yes, I think he is.
Can we, uh, restrict, uh, their crops? Can we say that they can't grow hemp?
Uh, I don't believe so. I mean, you're zoning the use of it and whether they chose to grow tomatoes one year or hemp another, that's a business decision the same way a restaurant, whether they wanna have an Italian or French or a pub. Uh, it's the zoning part of it that you're concerned with.
Thank you. I, well, then what I, what I hope whoever works on the, uh, approval motion, if that's what it, the approval motion, um, that we put in as many restrictions as we can about, uh, water usage and odor and noise. They were concerned about the motors and the fans and whatever, so, but we have an ordinance for that. So that should be able to be controlled.
I think as far as the hemp odor goes, um, it would have been my preference to ban the hemp. Uh, but apparently that can now be grown by right in Connecticut, so we can, we can no longer ban it. Uh, that's why we jumped ahead of the marijuana because now we can actually have some control over that. Um, so hemp could have been grown in a field in, on this farm by right, uh, without any objection from anybody. We actually have a little bit more control being inside the greenhouse. Um, we can, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Kevin, Danine, uh, we can write the regulation that they cannot produce objectionable odor from this greenhouse. Uh, and that would actually give us more control than if it was grown in an open field.
Uh, I believe so. We'll take a look at that when we draft the motion on that.
Remember that's-
Certainly if we're in an open field, you have no right, whether it's a dairy farm spreading manure on their fields or wherever.
Right.
Right. I think we may actually have more control because of the fact that it is in a greenhouse. Although it would be my preference to ban it. Vera?
Remember, that's a very subjective matter, what's objective, objectionable.
Yeah, we do have a very, um, objective, objective noise regulation. Um, and I think that i- if we're gonna write a approval motion, we should cite that Mansfield a noise regulation which is forty-five decibels. Uh, Luann and I know what it's like when it's not forty-five decibels. There is a governmental entity near us that has at times provided sixty-five decibels on our property, and I wouldn't wish that on anyone. Uh, but the regulation says forty-five decibels at the edge of the property and if we're gonna approve it, we're gonna have to hold them to that forty-five at the edge of their property. Yes, Katie?
Um, and I don't want it to come off sarcastic, but I'm glad you brought up about the fields. Uh, if you've ever gone by, I, I'm a farm girl. I grew up close to farms that had cows and horses and chickens. And there, on a hot, hot day, there is a smell that comes across. And then if they put like chicken poop or manure- And then if they put like chicken poop or manure on their field, sheep doo-doo is really stinky. So with this, they have told us they're gonna put filters on the greenhouses. They are enclosed. Um, I think it's gonna be better for the neighbors than if they were doing another farm right there.
Yes, Sarah.
Objectively, I I hope that
Sarah had her hand up first. Sarah and then Vera, yeah.
So although I empathize with the neighbors' concerns, I do feel that on the three issues, um, you know, the traffic, our town engineer really said that he didn't see it as being a problem. The water, although we didn't have our own expert, if it were truly a groundwater problem, all the wells would dry up. And so I did find their testimony believable in terms of the way the water is accessed. And the smell, I think there is recourse for that. So I do sup- I support this project.
Vera.
I I support it as as well, because I don't think there's a reason that we can deny it. But I do hope that they take from all of this discussion uh the angst and the anx- and anxiety of the neighbors and are the best neighbor they can be to the to that area. So that's what my hope is.
Luann.
Did we ever get any answer on whether we can require a path or sidewalk to be put in on the edge of the property? Because it seems like the big problem is with pedestrian traffic on the road and there not really being a place for pedestrians to walk and pedestrians are not in um taken into account during a traffic study. And that was one of the things that numerous people brought up.
That would be something that we could require. I think if I remember the discussions about that, it wasn't in a particular type of development where we would require sidewalks normally.
And actually, that's not
For you now, Paul.
Uh, Linda? Yes?
I was just saying, I'm just pointing that language up for you now regarding the the site plan approval requirements and when 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 uh a sidewalk is required um versus when you can waive it. Or it's not required, I should say.
I mean, I side like, we don't even need a real sidewalk. I think some kind of a walking path would go a long way towards um helping situation and alleviating a lot of the neighborhood concerns.
Along the edge of their property. I think that's something within our, Linda, is that within our powers to require that?
Um, again, it's a special permit, so I would argue you can add conditions that you feel are are needed. Um, Kevin, correct and can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but you know, if you're given that a lot of the testimony was regarding pedestrian safety, A, it would only be for this property. You can't require them to do anything off-site. Um, if if that's something you want to do, keep in mind, we do have a pending special that any requirement for that, the design would have to come back to you. And if the scenic road designation is approved, it that would go have to go through that as well. Um, let me just share the, the the language that is under site plan approval, which you are, you know, do need to do site plan approval and it it it's wrapped into your special permit approval is that sidewalks, bikeways, trails and or other improvements designed to encourage and enhance safe pedestrian and bicycle use shall be required unless specifically waived by a three-quarters vote of the entire commission. Seven votes for all sites within or proximate to plan of conservation and development designated and development areas. So those would be essentially kind of your mixed use centers, your compact residential, um proximate to schools, playgrounds, parks and other other public facilities or proximate to existing or planned walkways, walkway, bicycle or trail routes. In evaluating any waiver requests, the commission shall consider the size and location of the proposed development, its relationship to existing or planned development, school sites, playground areas and other public areas and the location and nature of existing or planned sidewalk, bike way or trail improvements. Um, so if you were looking to have some type of off-road pathway as a condition along the entire frontage of this property, um the one thing that i- i- without looking at that, because we did not really get into because of where this was sighted, which was towards the back of the property, we didn't really look at that entire frontage. I'm not sure what the width is there. I know they have stone walls and whether or not trying to put that walkway in um would then force an impact on a stone wall. But that's something that if you made that a condition, I would suggest that it would need to kind, you'd really have to come back and look at that trail uh to make sure that um you're not, you're not creating another problem or another or another impact um in doing that.
Right, without without knowing what it looks like, it's hard to say what impact there would be. Yes, Sarah.
It seems like if you only put a sidewalk or a path of some sort along that property, I don't see what solution that or you know what solution that would be anyway. Because people still have to walk on Brown's Road to get to that. So doesn't seem like that solves anything.
Vera.
I totally agree with Sarah. Uh, that whole area from thirty-two to Mansfield City Road is not a walking a road, it has no shoulders. And it's really dangerous, but people want to walk it, they walk it at their own risk. I don't, I don't think that little that the trouble they would have putting that walkway in uh appropriately, I think would not be helpful.
Dorian.
Yeah, that road, they do walk on it all the time, but there's no shoulders. I mean, for us to impose this on that this one property, it's not gonna resolve anything. So I don't think this should be an issue.
One one thing that we could do is encourage the town to look at Brown's Road, particularly between the property and thirty-two uh for possible improvements in the future.
Well, they would have to improve the whole road. So well, I mean, and and if it's going scenic, isn't it on the books to be uh scenic road?
Not yet.
It's a pending application. You'll be having a public in July.
Yeah, I if it goes through, we're not gonna be able to do it anyways.
Well, and just to clarify, there is a process for an alteration to it. That would go through the planning and zoning committee in the council.
Paul.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead, Bina.
Yeah, so, yeah, I I agree with Sarah. Or else uh talked about, you know, maybe it's no use just having a sidewalk in that section. Perhaps the contribute to this massive uh undertaking that the town will have, maybe they can contribute to that section and we can find other sources for sidewalks for the whole Brown's Road. Um, you know, just a suggestion.
Any other comments?
Are there any other questions for Kevin while we have him here? Um, I think you've asked a few on odor. Um, I know that water, I that the the three, the three items that seem to come up are odor, traffic and water. So is there anything else? Any other questions you have for Kevin while he's here on it on any, those issues or anything else related to this? It sounds like I may be working with Kevin on the approval, I I'm in approval motion, if that's the direction that you go.
Any other questions? Yes, Bina.
Just to follow my suggestion, is it legal for us to ask them to contribute to a potential sidewalk?
A fut- a future sidewalk.
Off, not off-site, uh and it could require an onsite, I'm not, in terms of contributing uh financial incentive or financial to hold on with for a sort of, I I don't think so, but I'll take a look at that, madam.
Yes, Vera.
Can we limit them to when deliveries come and go?
Limit the what? Sorry, we didn't hear.
Deliveries, trucks.
Oh, delivery trucks.
Because I've seen it in other towns where only certain hours you're allowed to have deliveries and stuff.
Uh, I'll I'll I can look Linda on that and I I have to take a look at our regs in terms on that. If if it's not a criteria in this, in the existing site plan approval or special permit approval, I'll have to take a look at that.
Any other comments or questions? So at this point, um, we have the option of of someone preparing um an approval motion or a disapproval motion or both. Uh, would would anyone be interested in helping prepare an approval motion? Can you usually do that?
My hand was going up as you spoke.
Okay, alright. Would anyone like to prepare um a disapproval motion? Okay, so let's let's uh write that up and then discuss it and vote on it at in our July meeting, which will be in person in the in the town offices. Town hall.
What's the date of that?
Uh, second, is it the second?
Tu- no, Tuesday, July sixth.
Sixth, not even close. Okay, uh, we have new business. Um, Linda, what what does the elementary school want to do? They want to remove six trees?
There there there's actually two, so there's two components uh to the application for the elementary school. So the first one, um, which is actually where we started uh last week on this, uh is that when you approve the special permit, um, as you recall, when you do these large development projects, we you went through it actually with Agbotic is an example. Um, they needed to submit a lot of information regarding their cut in fill operations and grading operations. And so it is part of the special permit. With the uh school project, that you allowed uh the deferral of that information um to the contractor. The 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 surveyors and engineers basically said, we're not, we're not gonna have the answers to this until we have a contractor in place. And so the uh the contractor has now um submitted and it's in your packet a response to the app- the application information related to cut, fill and grading, talking about how they're going to handle that operation onsite. And so um the condition of approval that you had originally um attached to the special permit was that this had to be completed and submitted by the contractor and approved by the commission prior to um the issuance of a zoning permit. So we are actually, they they are in for a zoning permit currently. Uh, that's how this came up is during the zoning permit review. We said, have you, you know, we clearly this wasn't done because we would have remembered bringing it to you. Um, and then as we were working on this, there was a sidewalk and the contractor, um, the school actually requested that the contractor remove um six trees that had been identified uh to be preserved. Um, so since, given that they have bought a single-family property, we thought that was something that rather than starting with the chair on a administrative modification, we would just bring it to the full commission this evening, since you were going to be reviewing um the response to the excavation information. So you do have a report for me regarding excavation. I will note, one of the approval criteria talks about notifying all property owners within if if you're excavating within fifty feet of of the property line, the applicant uh notified all of the property owners during the um special permit process. So we would consider that uh having been that. And I will also note that while I do not have any details, uh I have heard that an abutting property owner actually walked over and asked them to take down more trees, which our which our um tree warden is currently inspecting. So that may be, that may be another request, but we did not have details on that for you today.
Okay, so um
So, yeah.
Do you have a, do you have a motion for that?
I do. Um, if everyone, does anyone have any questions on what they've proposed for excavation um? Or tree removal? No questions.
Yes, Sarah.
So the a the abutter whose property it abouts, um, do they, are they okay with this?
We, that is, that actually is one of the things we're not sure of. So one of the things that you're going to see in the in the suggested approval motion is that the town has to coordinate with that property owner on the types, location and installation of trees to replace the six pines that are proposing to be removed. The the applicant, or I should say, it's a little strange because the applicant technically is the town. Uh, but the landscape architect for the project noted that in the area where those six pines are proposed to be removed, it's basically chain link fencing right now, um, you know, looking into a play area. And we're actually going to be putting up a solid fence. So we're, they're they're getting some additional screening um to begin with. Uh, they've noted that if needed, they would recommend installation um of three trees to replace the six pines. And so the way that I drafted the approval motion is that installation of the tree shall not be required if the owner provides written documentation indicating that they're pre- the preference that the trees not be installed. Although clearly that was not, the last few words is not are not showing up here, so we're gonna change, change that a little.
Another good thing about taking those trees out is that they do shade the solar panels. And so the school will actually be able to produce more electricity with those six gone.
So, that is Any other questions?
Okay, would someone like to put that forward?
I can put it forward.
Okay, thank you.
This is Candy. Move to approve the excavation grading plan submitted on June sixteen twenty twenty-one by new field construction, construction of the elementary school at one-three-four and to prove the site plan modification request of Mansfield Public Schools to remove six pine trees a budding property located at twenty-five Pine Woods Lane. This approval is subject to the following conditions. One, new field construction and the subcontractor shall update the spill prevention plan pursuant to the recommendations of the assistant town engineer. Two, the town shall coordinate with the owner of property at twenty-five Pine Woods Pine Woods Lane on the type, location and installation of three trees to replace the six pines being removed. Installation of the tree shall not be required at the owner by written documentation indicating their preference that the trees not be installed.
Moved by Tandy. Second by Corsi.
I just have a, I just have a quick thing. It's Warrenville Road, correct? Not Warrenville.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's right.
Got that confused with Pine Woods this morning.
So with that correction, um Did we get a second?
I agree to that correction.
Okay.
Uh, I believe a Corsi seconded.
Okay, and and you agree with the correction, Sarah? Okay, any discussion? Uh, we should do a roll call, right?
A Corsi?
Hi.
Aho.
Hi.
Candy. Candy?
Hi.
Uli?
Hi.
Cotton?
Hi.
Rattony?
Hi.
Plant?
Hi.
Ron?
Ron, I.
Ward?
Ward, I.
Motion passes unanimously. Is there any bus- other business we need to conduct tonight?
I do not believe so. Just a reminder that you have, um, a, the joint meeting with the town council on Wednesday, June twenty, uh, this Wednesday. Uh, so I'm sure Jen will be sending you out some reminder information on that. That is the hearing on the draft affordable housing plan. We did, uh, Jen did attach a copy of Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine, which is the Zoning Reform Act. Uh, so one of the tasks, I think, for regulatory review will be to, um, go through that and see what regulations need to be updated. Uh, based on that. Uh, I am happy to report, uh, one of your suggested modifications, uh, to that, to that legislation. Was to make the commissioner training by annual instead of annual and that was, uh, that change was incorporated. So, um, we'll, we'll get you those, we'll get you those details, but it's by annual training and I think they may have. The hours may have been reduced. I'd have to go back to the, uh, version we looked at, but I believe it's four hours, I think, every two years. Um, so, and with that, I will also note that the legit, that the act does include. Uh, a requirement, uh, by, by a certain date, it's not immediate, that your regulations be enforced by a certified zoning enforcement officer. And with that, I am very proud to announce this evening, uh, that Jennifer and Jaleen have both passed, uh, both of the exams as part of that training. They just heard, uh, about their second test, uh, today. So, um, the next step for them is to do their case study, um, and once they complete that, uh, they will both be certified zoning enforcement officers. So, um, I get, that is a huge kudos to both of them. I, I've heard from them exactly how difficult this training is. Um, if you can imagine, you are sitting there for four days straight. Uh, with lectures and then on the fifth day, you have a closed book test. Um, so you're, and they've, they've done two weeks of that over the last, uh, last year, year and a half. Um, so congratulations to them. That is, um, a huge accomplishment for both of them and we're very proud. All right, and that is all I have, uh, for now. Um, I don't know, Paul, if you have anything else. Did we lose Paul? All right, um, Mr. Ron, I do believe in the absence of Mr. A, Mr. In the absence of Paul, you are the vice chair, so I think you're gonna have to take over. Um, unless anyone has any other reports, uh, we did give you a referral from the town of Coventry if you have any questions on that. Um, I believe the hearing is Monday, July twelfth, so we can discuss that if, if there are any questions that you have. Um, at your July sixth meeting.
No, having, uh, Mr. Aho having disappeared, the vice chair will. Pretty suddenly.
I think he froze and then he left. So.
We don't want to freeze the adjournment, so, uh, we'll turn the meeting at nine twenty PM. The U folks on the twenty-third.